Good evening, welcome to the April 3 monthly hearing of the Morris Township Planning Board.
Hello. Like everyone to please make sure their cell phones are either off or on silence. The legal notice required in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied, and a statement certifying same will be executed. If you'd all please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to, uh... Will you give us a call to order?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Here.
Mr. Rabbit?
Here.
Ms. Van Order?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Benoit?
Here.
Ms. Barrett?
Here.
Ms. Teralleso?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Ms. Blake?
Here.
Ms. Slate?
Here.
Okay, if we could start with the approval of the minutes of the March 20th. Yes.
I would ask Mr. Chairman that we carry the minutes of the last meeting, please.
So carried.
Thanks.
And let's go to consideration of the first resolution. Mr. Warner, will you remind us, uh... Key this up for us?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. This was the township's application at the Baker Evans Farm. You recall the capital project to develop the property into an outdoor park and recreation facility for our recommend... Recomendatory review. The, uh, board, uh, found, uh, that the proposal was consistent with the master plan and a reasonable exercise in the township's authority, and recommended, uh, that the township, uh, pay close attention, as it always does, to stormwater runoff concerns of the neighboring public. Hopefully, the resolution accurately memorializes, uh, the board's, uh, recommendations in, uh, in regard to that application. And I believe everybody's qualified to move second and vote, uh, because it was unanimous.
Excellent. Can I get a motion to accept the resolution?
I move to accept. A second.
Are there any questions, comments, changes? Seeing none?
I'm sorry, actually, my apologies, and it's my fault. Not everyone is qualified, because we did have, uh, two alternates at the time, so my apologies, Board Member Barrett.
Okay, so can we get someone else to second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Van Order. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to have a roll call on that? Sorry, apologize. Rookie error.
Mr. Quillen?
Aye.
Your motion, do you want?
Second by Ms. Van Order.
Yes. Ready to vote whatever you like.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Van Order?
Yes.
Ms. Benoit?
Yes.
Ms. Teralleso?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Warner, will you take us through the resolution for the Order of St. Benedict's?
Certainly, that was, uh, the Del Barton application for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct an addition at the St. Mary's Abbey Monastery Building. Uh, the application was preliminary and final site plan approval and one design waiver for disturbance of steep slope areas. Uh, the, uh, board granted that application unanimously. Uh, and, uh, the board, uh, had various conditions of approval, particularly related to, uh, trees, uh, and outdoor lighting fixtures. I would point out that we did make one modest, uh, revision to the resolution. I know Sonia circulated it, uh, uh, the other day, if I recall correctly. Condition 3E on page 8. The original, uh, recommendation from the Environmental Commission was dark sky compliance for the lighting. That is not something that can always be obtained. As we know, it's relatively high standard. Uh, but, uh, the applicant, uh, requested that it be modified. They never actually frankly said they would be dark or could be dark sky compliant. Um, but, uh, the, uh, the condition is to have the backlight, uplight, and glare rating, uh, with an uplight, uh, equal to zero. So there'll be no uplight. Uh, and, uh, so assuming that fairly and accurately memorializes the board's decision and the conditions of approval, uh, then, uh...
Can we get a motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I have two small comments.
Can I get the motion first and then go into the comments as, as part of, uh, amending it?
All right, I'll move to approve the resolution.
Get a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, I have two comments, they're both minor, on page 3. About sixty percent of the way down the page where it says Exhibit A2, it says a three-dimensional rendering of the proposed addition.
Rendering, thank you.
I should say rendering. And then, more importantly, the next bullet says a partial site plan exhibit, uh, dated March 21st, 2023. But that can't be right, because our meeting was March 20th, 2023.
Hmm, I'm, I'm fairly certain that would be the 20th and not the 21st, because, uh, the other exhibit was, uh, the other... Oh, there's two, March 21. A1 is also March 21. If the meeting was the 20th, uh, I think it's fair to say that the date would be the 20th for all three. Yeah, it was the 20th, okay, so we'll make those two changes.
Thank you, Mr. Quillen. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Quillen, would you modify your men, uh, motion?
Yes, I move to approve the resolution, subject to changing on page 3, the word branding to rendering, where, uh, for bullet Exhibit A2, and subject to changing the date of Exhibit A3 to March 20th, 2023.
And, and we'll do the same for, uh, Exhibit A1.
Which I did not notice.
Yes.
So, Mr. Warner, could you just elaborate a little more on BUG? Is that something, um... I never heard of that before.
I'm not gonna profess to be an expert, uh, because I'm not an expert on that, but, uh, the, uh, the, uh, applicant, these were recommendations from the Environmental Commission, and, uh, again, in fairness to the applicant, they never said that they could, uh, uh, get certification for dark sky compliance.
There is a difference between certification and just complying with the guidelines.
Again, I'm, I'm gonna admit I am not an expert, and there may be board members who are more expert than I. Um, but, uh, we, we put in there the Environmental Commission's recommendations as the Environmental Commission set them forth. Again, very candidly, the applicant did not commit to that one. May not have committed to all of them, but has now committed to all of them with the modification on the dark sky compliance.
Okay, we've got a floating, we've got a second?
Second.
Any, now any questions? Changes? Further? No, seeing none, Sonia, can we get a roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Van Order?
Yes.
Ms. Benoit?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're ready for, uh, the first hearing, first application. Would you, uh, introduce it? And, uh, applicant, maybe you would like to step up? Applicant's attorney or whomever's gonna be presenting first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, and while they're getting ready, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I did have an opportunity to review the notice. Uh, and, uh, as the board will recall, this was one of multiple applications, uh, that, uh, the, uh, paper decided to put in a different paper, if you will. Uh, but, uh, so we did carry this matter. It was originally noticed for March 20. Uh, and on that di- uh, evening, we carried it without further personal notice, because the certified mailing was fine, uh, but since, uh, the paper was, uh, the publication was put in the Yasburg Park Press instead of our, uh, local paper, uh, it was carried with further publication. The applicant did publish, uh, on March 17th, uh, the, which is more than ten days in advance of this evening. And it was published in, uh, our local paper. Uh, and it was, uh, the content was sufficient, so the board does now have jurisdiction to hear and decide the case this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Santiago? You want to introduce the application?
Yes. Uh, this is PV 12-22, JCPN L here of First and Report, Lot 8601, Lot 4, 300 Madison Avenue, in the OL5 Zone for Site Plan. Applicant proposes installation of emergency generator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the board members and the professionals, and Ms. Santiago. My name is Russell Anderson, I'm with Cretone, Pachini, and Hasbro Heights. Our office represents JCPN L on this particular application. Uh, the application is for the installation of two backup generators and the relocation of two transformers. As it relates to the, uh, location at 300 Madison Avenue, uh, those improvements are necessary, uh, for the backup power for a critical infrastructure building. Uh, and Mr. Kritchlow will get into a little bit about, uh, that in just a second. Uh, to my right is Matt Kritchlow, who is the JCPN L Project Manager specifically for this project. Uh, he's gonna testify about the scope, the needs, and why this location, this time, this generator. We also have two engineers, Mr. Kaiser, uh, who's also our planner, and Mr. Hendershot, who's also our engineer. Uh, they will divide their testimony, but suffice it to say that Mr. Hendershot will talk primarily about the engineering behind it, and Mr. Kaiser will be our planner for the most part.
Okay, can I ask, uh, Mr. Warner, can we swear everyone in all at once?
Absolutely, as well as our board professionals, if you'll all raise your right hand. Do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you all.
Thank you. With that, uh, Mr. Chairman and the board, I'd like to start testimony with Mr. Kritchlow. Can you just, uh, give us your spelling, your address? And, um, have you, your attorney's told us who you are, but if you just wouldn't mind repeating it again?
Yes. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Kritchlow, spelled C-R-I-T-C-H-L-A-W, reporting out of the Morris Town General Office, 300 Madison Avenue, the site we're speaking about. Any other information needed?
No, you can begin your testimony at your attorney's leisure.
So, Mr. Kritchlow, uh, just for backup, you are the Project Manager for this specific project at this location, 300 Madison Avenue? That is correct. And you've been involved with it from the beginning of the planning process, is that fair to say? Yes. Okay. Why don't you give us a general overview of what the project is itself and why it's important now? So, our MGO, Morris Town General Office, as we call it, is, uh, a general office as well as our DCC, our, uh, Distribution Control Center that controls the JCPN L grid across New Jersey. Um, we've been working with Joseph Hendershot for a few years now, coming up with a electrical hardening plan to improve the electrical infrastructure of this building. Um, what we're proposing today is to install the emergency generator to back up the electrical infrastructure for this building, and mainly the DCC, the Distribution Control Center. Why is the project going on now? What is, why is this building so important? Well, we've gone through, um, multiple options and kind of trying to coordinate the best option for this project. Um, Joe's helped us come up with basically an overall electrical one-line and engineering scope. Basically, this generator's needed, like I said, to back up the electrical infrastructure of this building and the DCC, which helps control all the substations across New Jersey. Without the DCC, we would not be able to act under emergency, switch power towards certain substations and switch gear. Um, and overall, it helps us just maintain the, the grid across New Jersey. How... I'm not gonna use the right word here, but how catastrophic would it be if, uh, if, if power were to not be sustained at 300 Madison Avenue? It would be completely catastrophic. Um, basically, without the operations performed in the DCC at that site, we would not be able to talk to customers, control the grid across New Jersey in the event of emergency. If us, if one substation goes out, we currently have the ability to switch the controls over to another substation. Without this building, we would not be able to control the building, the grid. We would not be able to see the grid. All power would be lost. Yeah. And the project itself, with the two generators and two, uh, transformers, there isn't anything... There's no more construction on the building going on, is that fair to say? Yes, that's fair. So there's no more people coming to the building as a result of this? No more employees at the building as a result of this transaction? No, this is to back up the hardened, harden the DCC. Okay. Not to supply additional workforce. Right, and there's no more, there wouldn't be any traffic changes? No parking issues? Nothing that would otherwise affect anybody off-site of the property? Nothing that affects the, the property. Okay. Now, obviously, you've mentioned that it would be a catastrophic event, so you would characterize this specifically as a public benefit, that without it, the public is at risk for not having efficient power, is that fair to say? Absolutely. Okay. Okay. I don't have any more testimony for Mr. Kritchlow, if the board has any questions or the professionals?
Any board members have question for Mr. Kritchlow? Yes.
Does, uh, JCPN L have any other locations that provide this kind of backup? I'm interested in the fact, and a little concerned to think that one building is, is the central nerve station, and there's no backup to that one building?
There is a backup, uh, in Homedale, New Jersey. I can't go into the specifics on how we relay the controls and, and basically turn it over to that site. I can speak to the MGO being the primary, uh, control center. I know there is ability to switch to secondary and secondary control centers, but, um, yeah, I mean, this is the primary control center. Okay, that makes me feel better. Yeah.
Any other questions for the board members? Go to our professionals, Mr. Slate?
No questions.
Mr. Warner?
Nope.
Our planner?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson, you want to bring up your next witness?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Hendershot, if you would, uh, join me?
Alright, great, thank you.
Get a little facts on Mr. Hendershot, please?
Uh, I would be happy to do that. Mr. Hendershot, would you give us the benefit of your, uh, education and background for the purposes of the board?
First of all, my name's Joseph Hendershot, um, uh, I've been in, working in the engineering industry for 29 years. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I've been licensed since 2003. Um, so, 20 years, uh, as a licensed professional engineer as well.
Have you had the opportunity to testify in, in boards within Morris County?
I've actually testified before this board, uh, before, on a, uh, similar application.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, we'll accept your witness as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hendershot, as Mr. Kritchlow testified, you've been involved with this, uh, project essentially from the beginning, is that fair to say?
Correct, we, we've actually started working on this project in preliminary, uh, fashion around 2019. So, I mean, it's suffice to say, there's been a lot of planning, a lot of exhaustive studies that have taken place to make sure that we're, um, you know, providing the correct solution for, for the building.
Why don't you give us, uh, from your perspective as an engineer, the project overview and what it means, and what the development would look like?
Sure, if you can, um, you know, take a look at the, uh, the, the overall plan here. We actually have a Phase 1 of this project, which involves, uh, one installation of one single 500 KW diesel fire generator. The generator itself will be mounted in a, uh, weatherproof, sound attenuated enclosure. The enclosure is sound attenuated to 65 dBa at 23 feet, which is also, uh, it coincides with the New Jersey, um, daytime noise ordinance as well. Um, the, the generator will be located in excess of 23 feet from the, from the rear property line of the building, or of the, of the property, so we have no, no concerns about, uh, the generator, uh, exceeding the daytime noise ordinance. You can see from the, oh, maybe you can't see.
Well, while you're showing that, just for the record, uh, if we could have it marked as Exhibit A1, since it's a colorized version, I believe, of the Phase 1 site plan? Is that ac- an accurate description? Mr. Hendershot?
Yes, this, this plan is a Phase 1.
Thank you.
That's a little difficult.
Alright. While he's adjusting that, see, this is the outline of the generator. It will be located on a, um, on a steel bondage platform in the enclosure. Platform will provide access for maintenance and accessibility to the unit. Um, you'll also see the outline of this, uh, right here, which takes into account the location of the generator in Phase 2. We're going to provide this with a, uh, fenced in, it would be a fenced-in area with concrete collars to protect it, um, you know, and keep it, and make sure it's a, a safe environment. It doesn't get damaged, and to keep, you know, people that might, um, you know, maintenance people that might come into the building on the property, out of that area. It'll be a locked, uh, area. And... So now, we're gonna go to Phase 2.
And this would be A2, it's the Phase 2 colorized site plan?
Okay.
Exact, accurate?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, this, uh, plan shows the location of the Phase 1 generator, the Phase 2 generator. Now, you'll also notice that, uh, these are the existing, uh, underground conduits and the existing utility transformers. These will be relocated over to here. We will be, uh...
I'm sorry, when you say here, can you just, uh, speak directionally, please?
Correct, it'll go, it'll be to the north side of the, uh, Longhold Turnpike Road.
Thank you.
Okay? And then we will route new, um, new underground service conduits into the building, into a new, uh, service switchgear. Now, the reason, the main, uh, underlying reason for a lot of these upgrades is to increase the reliability. When, at the end of Phase 2, we will have two utility, uh, feeds into the building, and we will have, uh, two generators. So we will, um, the idea on, on this building is when they have a single power outage, they will not go to generator immediately. Okay, you have a, you have one utility source, uh, that fails, the switchgear in the building will automatically go to the other utility source, and the only ti- the only time you'll get to a point where the generators will start is if you lose both utility sources to the building. So the, the likelihood and the, the instances where the generators will actually run hopefully are, you know, at a bare, a very minimum. Let me see what else. The, uh, the generators also, both generators will be provided with a diesel subbase tank, double-wall tanks, um, and with leak, uh, detection on them. Um, and the idea there too is we had, there is existing underground tanks that serve the current generators. After Phase 2, we will be getting those, those underground tanks out of, uh, out of there, and it will be all above-ground tanks, uh, like I said, with double-wall protection and, um, leak detection. You know, and it's safe to say, like I said, you, you're not gonna start the generators until you have both utility failures, so it's safe to say that's more of a tertiary backup rather than a standby backup. We talked about the sound attenuation, talked about, um... I mean, all the, all the equipment has been designed in accordance with all the, the local codes and standards, uh, that apply to, to the installation. And, and the, the future generators, at the end of the day, each of the new transformer, one transformer will be able to supply the entire building should the other one fail. So that, that's part of the reliability in this, is to, uh, to make sure that one generator or one utility transformer can supply the entire building. So you actually have four means of powering the building, and that just goes to the criticality of the, of the, the operation of the building.
And, Mr. Hendershot, one of the things you mentioned, there was that the, uh, the generators may come on at the same time. What sort of an event would have to happen for both generators to be running at the same time?
Well, for both generators running at the same time, you would have to have two utility sources that fail simultaneously. Now, those utility grids, they are fed from two different substations within the JCPN L network. One is FDU, and then the other one is, uh, Madison Avenue. There's two different substations that they come from. So, the, the reliability of the two, uh, utility sources are very high.
That's good to hear, thank you, appreciate that. So you, you've drawn your conclusion that the, the, the plans as designed and the, the generators as installed would meet all of the associated standards for operation as it relates to this facility?
Correct. And they actually, because of the reliability standards that are, um, inherent with Jersey Central Power and Light, they actually go above and beyond minimum code standards.
I don't have any additional questions for Mr. Hendershot, if the board has questions or professionals, welcome.
Yes, Mr. Barrett. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hendershot, thank you for your presentation. Regarding the, um, I guess the, the structure that, that is sound attenuated, I take it regardless of the structure itself, we will hear some noise coming from the, uh, generator when it's being tested or maintained?
Correct, there, there's, there's always gonna be some, and now, you know, I'll, I'll follow up with that, there's, there's two levels of sound attenuation with the generator enclosure. There's, there's the enclosure around its, uh, the generator itself, which is an insulated enclosure, but there's also a, uh, what's called a, uh, an exhaust silencer inside the generator that helps attenuate the actual engine mechanical noise.
Okay.
That's exhibited to the out, to the atmosphere.
Are there particular times or days in mind to test or maintain the generator? Make sure it's working?
The generators are gonna be tested during norm, during the day, during normal hours. They will not be tested at night.
And what's, what's normal hours?
I mean, you, usually around, um, 9, 10 o'clock in the morning?
In the morning?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, one, I'm sorry, one final question, um, and this may have been addressed already, I, I noticed there's a, a technical committee report dating back to September of 2022, and one comment is that, um... I, I take it JCPN L was advised to provide documentation that the, the noise is, is compliant with applicable noise standards in terms of, I assume, for testing purposes and working purposes, has that been supplied?
Yes, that was part of the secondary, the secondary submission.
That's correct.
We, we actually have the shop drawings for the generator that show the noise levels.
Okay, I'm looking at our professionals, they're, they're nodding in agreement.
Mr. Warner, you had something you wanted to add?
With the board's permission, only because it's on that particular issue. The, uh, uh, 7 Colton 29 is a state regulation that, uh, limits the, uh, noise to 50 dBa at night and 65 dBa during the day, and that's what was, uh, demonstrated, uh, for compliance purposes, correct?
Correct, yes.
And, uh... Should the board so desire a stipulation that any, uh, that the testing uh, will be between the hours of 9 to 5, Monday through Friday, or more restrictive perhaps, the board wishes, uh, the applicant will stipulate at least to 9 to 5 weekdays?
Yes, absolutely, we'll test basically, we'll test it whenever you want.
I'll, I'll leave that to the board.
Yeah, just, just one final point, I know there's a, um, there's a Montessori school, I think there's a school for young kids close by that property, am I getting that right?
It's two.
There are two of them, right?
I believe so.
Okay, in, any issues with, if you're gonna test the unit between 9 and 5? I'm assuming the kids are there between 9 and 2, 9 and 3? Would, will the sound carry over to where the, uh, the schools are?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be some, some noise that carries over. Uh, I mean, because again, it's still being run at 65 dBa, which is, you know... You know, it's like a, a truck running, you know, um, near it, you know, on a, on a piece of property. I mean, noise is gonna carry. Uh, but it's within the... I mean, noise is going to carry, but it's within the, you know, the limits published by the state.
Mr. Henderson, just if I may, just for a second to jump in. With the testing cycle for these generators, typically how long is the cycle from a time perspective? Is it five minutes, is it two hours?
I mean, it usually runs for a half hour, 30 minutes is usually the norm, the weekly test cycle. And then once a year, they'll do a four hour load bank test on the generators. And that's act, those are actually tests required by NFPA as part of the code requirements.
Okay, if we can move on to Mr. Barrett's question.
Just real quick, I'm just interested in the, the tank size and the tank security. If you could elaborate a little bit about that.
Sure, the tanks right now are set to be 5,000 gallon tanks. They are, they were designed for a five day supply for the generators in case of a catastrophic sandy type incident where there would be trouble getting fuel to the site. Again, they're, they're double wall, they're UL 142 is the, the standard, but they're, you know, very heavy, heavy and they actually, the tanks when they're filled, most, most likely will weigh just as much as the generator.
More about the, the security of, of the tank itself.
Well, the, as I mentioned before, there, the entire generator yard will be enclosed in a fence. It'll be locked and accessible to qualified personnel only. There'll also be bollards around the, the fenced area to prevent, you know, any vehicles from striking it or anything.
Will there be any, any roof over the enclosure?
There was not intended to be any roof over the enclosure, no.
Any other questions, Ms. Wilson?
And how high is the fence that surrounds the generator?
The fence right now is intended to be eight feet high.
Okay, because I did see in certain places in here it said six, so it's supposed to, it'll be eight.
That's, that's the intention is it was supposed to be eight feet high.
Okay, thank you.
Now that will require a variance.
Yeah, that does.
The board at six feet?
Yeah, anything more than six feet or, well, anything more than six feet would require the variance.
Okay.
So regardless of what yard it's in, so, yeah. And, and the, that would be covered under the applicant's notice by way of the catchall language. So the board has jurisdiction to grant that relief. It was something that was identified as a possibility. Frankly, when they changed it to six feet, we thought that possibility went away. But now it's back to eight feet, so it's a variance.
Well, I mean, I'm sure if that's an issue, we can, can adjust it back down to six feet if that's what the board wants.
Well, I think you could pick either one and, but.
Rather be eight.
Tell us what you want and we'll vote on it. Maybe you want the variance here.
Ms. Wilson, any other questions?
No, that's it.
Any, Mr.?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of questions. You referred to the generators as phase one and phase two. What will, what's your expected timing for the installation of these generators?
Well, phase one, as soon as we're granted approval here, we're, we're planning to order the generators. Now, keep in mind, the generators right now with the way supply chain is running, have a year delivery time on the generator. Okay, so we're, we're probably to complete phase one, we're probably looking at sometime late next year before it's actually commissioned and, you know, ready to, to, to put into operation. Phase two is, has yet to start being designed yet. So it's very difficult to put a timeline on that. But I, you know, that, that's going to be up to First Energy to, to determine when they're going to implement that. I can't provide an answer on that.
But if I may, Mr. Chairman, you're asking for the relief for phase one and two now, correct?
Correct.
Is there a reasonable approximation as to when phase two would be put into effect since you're asking for that site plan and variance relief at this time?
Mr. Warner, if I may interject for just a second. If it turns out that based on the plans that are being presented tonight, if the, if the actual system as design is different than what you see in front of you, then we would obviously have to be back in front of the board to have something different approved. So we are seeking approval based on what you've seen in front of you here as opposed to something in the future that we haven't winded. But we would certainly be amenable to coming back if we need to. But we definitely would like to see approval for both phases as they are currently, currently designed.
Without any even estimation of when phase two would be implemented, okay?
Mr. Quillen, do you have any other questions?
Well, yes, so there's currently at, at least one generate, one generator on site now, right?
Correct.
And will that generator remain in place until phase two is completed?
Correct.
All right, so once phase one is installed, you'll have two generators?
Two generators, correct.
And the phase two generator will, will replace the current generator?
Correct.
And you can't, since phase two hasn't been designed yet, you can't really say whether that's the same size as the phase one generator?
Oh, no, we know that the phase two generator will be the same size as the, the phase one generator, they'll, they'll be matched.
Because each generator will be intended to power the entire building?
The entire emergency load of the bill, the essential load of the building. It will not power the entire building. It will power the, the critical operations center as Matt spoke to for the, the DCC and the, and the critical facilities that need to operate during the storm situation.
What does DCC stand for again?
Distribution Control Center.
Okay. All right, I'm just not sure whether we can grant an open ended approval with the variance. I mean, I know in the land use law, construction has to start a certain time after approval. So if phase one starts and is completed within the time period permitted, but then phase two takes six years, I'm not sure what that means in terms of what we're allowed to approve.
Okay, within five years?
I think five years would be absolutely.
Reasonable? Okay.
And, and just so I understand, when you say within five years, five years from approval, five years after phase one is implemented, when does the five year phase begin?
I would say five years after phase one is completed.
Five years after phase one is completed, it, it's our goal to start phase two immediately after phase one.
Okay, we've got an answer. Are you saying phase one gets completed, you're going to start phase one immediately? And then five years after phase one is completed, you'll have completed phase two?
That's, yeah.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to move.
Right, just understand, um, you know, that's why I'm conferring. Matt is representative for First Energy, so I don't have the, you know, basically I don't control the purse.
I'm just trying to respect Board Quillen's concern.
Right, so I mean, I want to get an answer. Right, so that's the answer.
Great.
Five years after completion of phase one.
Okay.
And Mr. Warner, we have the authority to approve.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a hard and fast, we have an ordinance provision that requires commencing construction within one year. Of course, it's anticipated that that will not be a problem for phase one. My concern was when does phase two start?
Yeah.
If ever, but I think with the estimation that was provided as being reasonable and the testimony, the witness, the board has the authority to grant phase one and phase two, should, should it so just determined to do so.
Okay, all right, thank you, those were all my questions.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Quillen read my mind.
Great. Anything from our board professionals, Mr. Slate?
Just a follow up to Mr. Barrett's question. I, I looked at the school on Con Road is 1,200 feet away and the, the one generator meets the noise limit of 23 feet. So I don't expect that to be a problem. I don't, with background noise, I don't even know if you would, you would hear it that far away.
You hear the train whistle before they get to the gym?
I was just going to say that, yeah.
Question though, is there any chance that both generators could be tested at the same time? And the combination of those two noise limits, would that still meet the noise limit property line? Or do we just solve that by make sure they're not tested at the same time?
We can do either, either or, we could test either with them separately if that's deemed requirement. But I'm, still have a reasonable confidence level that even if both generators are running at the same time, given the distance from, to the property line, you know, they would still be within this daytime noise levels.
Okay, no, no other questions?
Mr. Warner?
Real quick, there's a memo from our TCC back in September. Were all the requested changes made to the zoning table or was that actually Mr. Kaiser and Mr. Styers? So he'll, he'll address that, I guess. I'll hold the rest of them, I think they're all going to be Mr. Kaiser, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, you bring your next witness?
Will do, thank you. Thanks, gentlemen. I bring up Mr. Bob Kaiser. And just like Mr. Henderson, Mr. Kaiser, if you would give us the benefit of your educational background and your work experience and purposes of testifying before the board?
Uh, yes, my, my name is Robert V. Kaiser and I'm a civil engineering graduate from Lafayette College. And I worked as city engineer in Eastern Pennsylvania for nine years. And then I was third engineer for the township of Princeton for 30 years. And then with the consolidation of Princeton, I was the director of engineering for the consolidated municipality for three years. And I retired at that point and I've been helping out Styers Associates since then, which is past six years or so.
And, Mr. Kaiser, have you had the benefit of testifying before other boards or this board in Morris County or local surrounding county?
Uh, yes, yes, numerous, numerous locations here in the state, not this board though. But I'm a licensed professional engineer and I'm a licensed professional planner.
Mr. Anderson, we're satisfied.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kaiser, you also have been involved with the planning of this project essentially from the beginning. Is that fair to say?
Uh, yes, the, the plans that are before us were developed by my office with Styers Associates. The site plans and we've been involved in the planning of this project for, I guess, almost two years now.
And as a, as the planner testifying here, you've come, you've evaluated all the plans and made comparisons to the MLUL and other relevant statutes. Would you walk us through the, from a planning perspective, the variances we're seeking as well as your involvement with the project?
Yes, well, in addition to the reviewing the planning aspects of the projects, I've also involved with the engineering project, portions of the projects and coordinating with JC and PNL regarding the needs, location of the generators, discussing parking, parking issues, locations of utility feeds and so forth. So I've been very involved with this particular project. Regarding the variances that are required, as was mentioned earlier, there's a phase one and a phase two. With the phase, phase one, a, the, the setback is required is 100 feet. The existing setback from the existing generator that's going to stay in place until phase two is implemented is 67.67 feet. And proposed phase one distance is 62.62 feet. Uh, well over that 23 feet foot distance that you heard testified to regarding the distances to where the 65 decibel level occurs. Uh, under phase two, the distance decreases to 59.53 feet. Again, well over that 23 foot distance. And those distances are called, called out on the plan from the phase one generator and from the phase two generator. In addition, there are existing variances that are required. One is the front yard setback along Madison Avenue. Existing variance is 94.07 feet where 100 feet is required. And the maximum floor area ratio is point one, point 516 where point 25 is required. And that's existing condition that is, will not be impacted at all with this particular project. Also, I would like to point out, as was testified to earlier, there are transformers required for this particular project. And the transformer distances existing is 14.85 feet. And proposed because the transformers need to relocate to this particular location, the setback is 5.5 feet. That location is necessary because these transformers are larger than the ones that are located here and they're needed to provide sufficient power to the entire building.
Your full name is Chairman, Mr. Kaiser, are, all these setbacks are from the rear property line adjacent to Old Turnpike Road, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Regarding, regarding parking, 500 spaces is required and existing today, there's 518. So we're over, over the parking requirement. Under phase one, there'll be reduction in parking to 508 spaces. And then under phase two, because of the switch, there's actually parking spaces gained. There'll be 513 parking spaces. So under phase one and phase two, we will have, still have over 500 spaces, which is the required number of spaces.
Mr. Kaiser, would he, would like me to, because we're JCPNL's utility and is responsible for power generation, I was hoping you'd speak to why this project would be considered an inherently beneficial use under the terms of the municipal land use law?
Yes, this is a, a critical need, as you've heard earlier. If this building goes down, there's going to be a very significant problems, not only here in the county, but, but statewide. And this building, the data center is located here. Power goes down, the computers don't work, there's no light. People in the building can't, can't function. And this is the hub of operations for the state of New Jersey for JCPNL. We heard that you have, they have secondary location, but this is the main location for JCPNL. And in terms of inherently beneficial use, this is sort of a classic example as to how important power is, that obviously it's inherently beneficial. And it's very important that these generators be approved.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Kaiser, I'll be happy to kick it to the board to.
Yes, any board members have a question for Mr. Kaiser?
I just have one, the existing transformers then are removed or they stay?
The existing transformers will be removed, yes.
After, at the end of the whole thing?
Yes, yes, after, after all the work is completed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Quillen? Mr. Benoit? Board professionals? Uh, no question.
Go ahead.
Why don't you go first?
Okay.
Just to be clear, is the transformer, the relocated transformer, is that part of phase one or phase two?
That's part of phase two.
Okay, and I want to also be clear, you are also seeking a variance for fence height, correct?
That's correct, as was testified to earlier, the current proposed height is eight feet, not six feet.
Okay, I think, and actually, the one other question I had is, do you, can you confirm that none of the generators or accessory structures exceed 15 feet in height? that none of the generators or accessory structures exceed 15 feet in height?
If it's okay with the board, just to translate, it sounds like the plans likely have the generators at 15 feet or less. But we'd have to go back to the shop drawings to confirm that. So we can confirm that with the board as part of its approval scenario.
It would require another variance. It would.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would confirm that based upon the measurements, there, it's three quarters of an inch over 15 feet, so.
I, my math's saying four inches over 15.
Four inches.
That's what my math is coming up with.
Okay, and in a similar vein, the, the total aggregate square footage of all the accessory structures per ordinance shall not exceed 900 square feet. Can you confirm that the, you know, when all is said and done, that the two transformers and the two generators will not have a lot coverage exceeding 900 square feet?
Yes, I can.
All right, those are my only questions. Thank you.
Mr. Warner? Yeah, did we get the magnitude of the height over 15 feet? Because it's variance relief, we have to be relatively specific.
I can't testify, but I'm going to suggest.
I will correct Joe, and it's four and a half inches. Joe was closer than I was.
Maybe we want to call 15 and a half feet, just to play it safe. The, okay, the, few things. First of all, the memo from September 26th, you made the changes to the zoning table for the street frontages. I was able to note that. You made the, the appurvious coverage is under the requirement and it is not changing as proposed, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and the front yard setback that you mentioned, the rear yard setback that you didn't mention, those are both pre-existing non-conformities and they are not changing, correct?
Correct.
And Elizabeth, Liz, well, I'm being very formal. Ms. Laney will correct me if I'm wrong, but those are pre-existing non-conformities and not changing, so you don't, and they're not being impacted by the, by the project. So I don't believe they need variance relief, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The floor area ratio. Do you know whether or not, or have any evidence whether or not the building was approved and/or the construction commenced prior to the ordinance requiring a floor area ratio for the zone?
We did some research on that particular issue, and we checked some historic aerial photographs. And we checked a aerial photograph of 1979. And at that time, it shows the building under construction showing the footprint of the, of the existing building. So based on that, the approval would have had to been granted prior to 1979.
So it's your understanding that the floor area ratio deviation that exists was approved, or the project was approved prior to the ordinance requiring the floor area ratio to be point two five? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And based upon same, then, if it pre-existed the ordinance, they would not have needed variance relief then, nor would they need it now? If, if, if that's accurate. The, you put the OL5 requirements on the plan, you submitted cut sheets, correct?
Correct.
And as you stated, the parking requirements, while they're changing, going down and going back up again, they're always over the 500 parking space minimum permitted, so no variance relief, correct?
That is correct.
And you mentioned the inherently beneficial use, regardless of whether any or all of this is an inherently beneficial use, I take it you're seeking the bulk variance relief on the C2 flexible C grounds, that the purposes of the MLUL are advanced, and the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments on the positive criteria?
That's correct, yes.
And your testimony with respect to inherently beneficial use would be your testimony with regard to the benefits substantially outweighing the detriments associated with the variance relief sought?
That is correct as well.
And the negative criteria as well, no substantial detriment to the public good, no substantial impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance? That's your opinion?
That's correct.
The Environmental Commission had some recommendations. The, if, did you have an opportunity to review their memo November 8, 2022?
Yes, I have.
Okay, the five day supply sub base tanks having protections in place in case of a leak, I guess you testified to at least some of that, but you're, the applicant's willing to comply with those recommendations?
Yes, they are.
And you'll contact the building department and/or other appropriate authorities before disturbing or removing the existing underground storage tanks?
That's correct, yes.
And you'll be, is anything going to be planted?
There's no plantings proposed.
So then I guess you won't be violating the do not plant list. The, that's why I went to law school, by the way. The, okay, all right. I have nothing further, including no more silly jokes. My apologies. Thank you. I see there's a gentleman out there. I don't know whether he's with the second applicant or he's a member of the public. If he's a member of the public, I apologize. You have, you're not a member of the public.
Okay, that's true. Let the record reflect, we opened and closed with respect to questioning from the public as each witness.
Yes, excellent.
One comment I'd like to make, there was a question regarding the square footage of the accessory structures and so forth. And when I said that would not exceed the, I believe it's 900 feet, that's based on new square footage. That, that's taken into consideration under phase one, there's existing generator. Under phase two, there's a second generator. So if you take a look at both generators at the same time, the new, you probably exceed 900 square feet. But if you take into consideration this, the coverage of the existing generator and the existing transformer, you would not. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
I think another variance is required.
It's, it's not a net.
Right.
Right, but you're, you're netting out the one generator that's getting removed.
At one, I think it's at one time. What do you have on the lot at one time?
They're never going to have three generators, though. They're only going to have two or one.
Oh, so, so, sorry. With the two generators and the two transformers, will it be 900 at any, if we see 900 square feet at any time?
Yes, 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 it would, if we don't net it out, yes.
And I think that is a, correctly from wrong, Liz, a one variance, one particular ordinance provision, actually, no, there's two provisions, right? There's a sub A, it is sub D and E or whatever.
No, it's, it's correct. The 900 square feet is one, and then the exceeding 15 feet is another.
Yeah, they're different provisions, that's right. So those are additional variances that the applicant would, I take it your testimony that the same C2 benefits and that substantially outweighing the detriments would apply for that bulk variance relief as well?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and the height of the generators and the size of the generators and transformers are necessary for these purposes for which they're being installed?
Yes, they are.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. Anderson, would you like to conclude your, your application?
Yes, I would, and I appreciate the board's time as well as the professionals' time. You know, we, we are adding two more variances to the list that was already set forth with the two rear yard setbacks, one for the transformers, one for the generator itself. And then the waivers for the minimum lot area, the floor area ratio and the front yard setback that are not affected by our current, by our current scenario. You've heard the factual testimony from Mr. Kritchlow as to the factual need for these generators in this location at this time. You heard from Mr. Henderson about the specifications of the generators themselves as it relates to why to, why there, and why we're doing this again at this time, make sure that everybody is protected, the public at large. And you heard from Mr. Kaiser that the variances that are sought are necessary for the purposes of installing this equipment, and the benefits to same outweigh the detriments that there, if there is any at this point, frankly. And that would conclude our testimony.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Again, I don't see anybody from the public, so there's no questions from the public. No public, public commentary. And no public, no comment. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Warner if he wouldn't mind just running down our variances, so that if a board member does choose to make a motion for or against this, we know what we're voting for or against.
Certainly, I'll do my best, because the variances were coming fast and furious. But.
I know you're going to do a great job.
Well, thank you. I had pressures on preliminary and final site plan approval. Generator setback 59.53 versus 100 feet required. Transformer setback 5.5 feet versus 100 feet required. Those were when each of the four set accessory structures was at its closest to the rear property line of Old Turnpike Road. No need for floor area ratio variance, no need for front yard setback, no need for rear yard setback. Yes, need a variance for an eight foot fence height, whereas six foot height maximum is permitted. And then we had the additional variance relief for the 15 and a half foot approximate height for the accessory structures, whereas 15 foot maximum is permitted. And the 900 square foot cumulative, not.
Aggregate, square footage.
Aggregate square footage of the accessory structures is being exceeded, as testified to, we don't exactly have a quantification to that. Frankly, we should, we should have an estimate, so maybe somebody could work on that quickly. And the, and I believe that is all the variance relief. The conditions are all the conditions stipulated to, including those set forth as recommendations in the environmental condition, Environmental Commission memo, as well as, and the board will tell us, if it's Monday to Friday, nine to five, for the testing of the generators at separate times, is what I'm anticipating, but please tell me if I'm wrong, if you want to change that timeframe, and if you want to make, and/or make them.
Sure, whoever makes the motion will add that to their motion.
But I'll assume there'll be some restriction on the time and, of the generator testing. And I don't think there were any other conditions.
I have a few other conditions.
Approval, other than the ones that Jim Slate's about to add.
And I did, just before you guys bother going through that calculation, using Foley's drawing with the walkways and the actual generator, I came up with 490 square feet for each generator. So I, I'm not sure the size of the transformer, I mean, do we just say 1,000 square feet for both, you know, just for.
Yeah, we, we were looking at the entire fenced in footprint, but. We defer to Mr. Slade as.
If you guys are good with 1,000, we're good with 1,000.
I, I did note in the file that there are a number of open building permits and the building department requested they get addressed. I, I do believe that they would probably hold on issuing any new permits until those old permits are closed out, but I want to make sure the applicants wear that. The fence height note should be changed on the plans from six to eight feet. And the 75 foot front yard setback from Punch Bowl Road on the building envelope should be shown as 100 feet. And then, and in addition, I mean, Steve, you did mention that there's no variance required, the zoning table indicates the variance required for the front setback. That should just be a single asterisk. Right now, it's a double, so that zoning table should be changed to indicate single actress or single asterisks for front yard setback, rear yard setback, and the floor area ratio.
Correct.
Indicate it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition.
Those are zoning table revisions, yeah?
Correct.
Those are all stipulated to by the applicant, correct?
That's correct. Okay, if we can get a motion from a board member to accept or deny this application, we'll move it forward.
I'll, I'll put forth the motion with the stipulations as outlined by Mr. Warner and and Jim, and I don't, I don't think there's anything else.
The timing.
And the timing to be, to be determined for the start and completion, the start of phase two and completion of phase two.
Well, the timing on the generator testing.
Oh, and the timing of the generator testing being during normal business hours, nine to five.
And.
Can we make them separate?
Would the motion also be for the generators to be tested separately as opposed to at the same time?
Yes.
Sure, why not?
Okay, can we get a second?
A second, Deb.
Okay, any discussion among the board members? Seeing none, Sonia, will you give us a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Is in order?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. I'd like, at this time, for us to take a quick five minute break, and we'll switch out applicants. Mr. Kaiser, you and I have history.
Thank you to the board.
Thank you.
I built your planning boards, April.
This meeting is being recorded.
Now we're ready for the roll call. Here.
Mr. Rabbit?
Here.
Is there an order?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Barrett?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Aliso?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Ms. Laney?
Here.
Slate?
Here.
And the last one is Santiago here.
Okay, Sonia, would you introduce this next application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, next application is TB01-23, Order of San Diego, New Jersey, Pen Mary's Abbey. It's block 4501, lot 201, to 30 Mendham Road in the OSGU zone. Applicant proposes a 1,170 square foot one story addition to the existing fine arts center.
Mr. Newmark, as you know, we'll be getting you your own chair since you're here every week.
Thank you very, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Well, it's good to be here. I've enjoyed my time before this board and look forward to many more. We're, we're prepared to proceed as has been described by Miss Santiago. We are seeking site plan approval for a small addition to the fine arts building. And I will have, this evening, I will have Jamie Gerantano, our project engineer, and Steve Aludo, who is the project architect. And if questions are needed from Father Michael Titt, who's the headmaster, he is also here. So with no.
Would you like to have everyone stand up? Mr. Warner will swear in all the witnesses.
That seems like a good idea.
And our board professionals, do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? Thank you all. And with the chair's permission, I did have an opportunity to review the notice, found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served, certified mail on March 23, published, and I'll note in the daily record it was published, also on March 23, both at least 10 days prior to this evening, so the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Go ahead, Mr. Newmark.
Thank, thank you very much. Mr. Gerantino, you have been sworn. First, let's establish once again on the record your credentials as a professional engineer.
Good evening, James Gerantano, I'm a licensed professional engineer. I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from NJIT in 1994. You heard this last, last hearing. Yes, nothing has changed.
You haven't lost your license in the last 14 days?
No, I have not.
We're, we're fine with Mr. Gerantino.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Walk the board through the site plan and.
Yes, so I have two exhibits tonight, just by way of background. This is block 4501, lot 2.01, approximately 165 acres in total area. It's in the OSGU zone. Schools are a permitted use within the zone. What I'd like to refer to is what I've marked as exhibit A1, and I've dated it today's date. This is an exhibit entitled Double Art and Fine Arts Center, existing conditions, Ariel, block 4501, lot 2.01, Township of Morris, Morris County, New Jersey. And believe it or not, it is dated May 4, 2020, because that's when this application was originally going to be heard. Just by reference, north is straight up on this exhibit. Mendham Road, as you could see, is to the north. You have the north field. This is, again, this is pre-fieldhouse activities. We have Old Main labeled, you have Trinity Hall, and the subject of this application is the Fine Arts Center, which is. We have Old Main labeled. You have Trinity Hall, and the subject of this application is the Fine Arts Center, which is in the lower middle third of the plan. You have Westgate Drive, which is the entrance closest to the Fine Arts Center. You could see here as I'm pointing, on the northern side of the Fine Arts Center is the loading dock. This building is actually approximately 850 square, 850 linear feet horizontally from Mendham Road. The elevation change is actually quite significant. Elevation's at approximately 360 out here on Mendham Road, and when you get up to the Fine Arts Center, it's about 488 based upon topography. You don't realize it, but Westgate really does climb up there. There's all existing vegetation buffering the Fine Arts Center from Mendham Road. Moving on to what I've labeled as Exhibit A2, and just to identify it, Del Barton Fine Arts Center, site plan rendering, block 4501, lot 2.01, Township of Morris, Morris County, New Jersey. It is dated May 4 of 2020. So what you'll see here is basically a push-in. So we've blown up the Fine Arts Center, which you can see is in the middle of this exhibit. You have the pedestrian walk just to the south of it. Old Main is to the southeast. Trinity Hall is, we'll call it to the west. Westgate Drive is directly north. You can see a gray shaded area on the north side of the building. That's a 1,265 square foot addition. It's for storage. You'll hear from Mr. Aludo. There's no class space being put in there. There's no increase in parking demand or student population resulting from this application. There is a existing sidewalk which is being relocated due to this addition, which would come back down to the service driveway, and the only utility improvement that we would need for this application is to relocate an existing gas meter, which is actually located on the northern side, on the western side of the northern face of the existing building, and it would be relocated to the opposite side outside the proposed addition. There are no other site improvements proposed. This is a very small application. I reviewed the grading in the area. The steepest existing grades, which are all man-made as a result of the construction of the Fine Arts Building, is 16%, and that's about 170 square feet of the area. Everything else is less than 16%. I ran the scale between all the contours. So there really isn't, you know, as far as steep slope disturbance, we're not anticipating, you know, any steep slopes to be disturbed. Again, very minor site plan. That is all I have with regard to direct testimony, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from board members? Ms. Wilson?
One question. Is the plan before us tonight exactly the same as, I think we got these plans in the past?
Yeah, yes, these were originally filed when Del Barton filed an application back in 2020, so my site plans haven't changed. With the exception of, we did have a misprint on here. It's 1,265 square feet and not 1070. Mr. Warner was ready to get me on that one.
Any other questions? Any other board members? Thank you. Mr. Slate?
No questions.
Mr. Warner?
Real quick, the two things. One, you said the slopes were man-made as a result of the Fine Arts Center. Oh, the construction of the Fine Arts Center.
Correct.
Not the, okay, I thought you mentioned, never mind that one. The you said there's no steep slope disturbance?
16% is the steepest slope we're disturbing, based upon the contours that we have on the plan.
This is a site plan, preliminary and final site plan application. I had a note that it was, there was a steep slope waiver for slopes greater than 25% and on the plan as necessary disturbance. It's on page one of the site plan. So is the plan wrong or
I go on the record as the plan is wrong because I actually took the scale today and ran it in between all the contours.
So is the applicant not seeking any relief other than site plan approval?
Apparently so.
Correct.
Okay, maybe we should just have that double-checked with our engineer.
Yes.
I have nothing further.
We'll bring Mr. Girantano. I'm sorry.
Girantano. Nice Irish name.
We'll move on to the next witness. Mr. Slate has some questions. We reserve the right to question. Before he leaves, I do have to ask our planner if he has any questions.
No, he answered the 1265 question. Thank you.
And please let the record show that there are no members from the public to ask any questions of this witness.
Thank you very much. Call Steve Aludo?
Maybe the only question we have from Mr. Aludo, as he appeared before us last week, is his license still in
Yes, my license is still intact.
Very good. You may have that.
Good evening once again. Mr. Girantano addressed the proposed project with relation to its dimension, eventual and topographic characteristics off-site. I will address the metrics of the addition itself. The existing art center, and I have two exhibits. The existing art center is approximately 36,686 square feet over three levels. The proposed addition is 1,265 square feet, a single-story addition. And this exhibit, which is, will be marked Exhibit A3, is labeled A1. That is correct.
Nope, just identify it again.
Yes, this is entitled A-1, first level floor plan. And what is illustrated on this exhibit is the existing floor plan of the art center and shown in poche, and in gray area is a proposed single-story addition. This addition is constructed to store and assemble stage sets for the programs within the art center. It is located to the northwest side of the building. The existing building is quite irregular in shape, given its context within the campus, so I'm now referring to exhibit, well, the exhibit entitled A2. And I point out that this exhibit yes, this exhibit was submitted as part of the package. However, I have supplemented it with two photographs to show its context within the campus. And on this exhibit that I will now mark A3 is the west elevation showing the two-dimensional view of the building, which exists. Its current height, according to ordinance, and average grade is 40, approximately 44 feet in height, the height of the proposed addition being 15 feet and 5 inches relative to ordinance average height. And that has been pocheted in the color green against the existing elevation, so you can get an idea of the scale of this. And then the photographs that are also shown on this exhibit indicate the building's location as an addition onto the existing Fine Arts Center where it could be, it is proposed that this addition, albeit as small as it is, is barely visible on the, within the campus context itself, given the configuration of the existing building, the topography, and views from adjacent buildings on campus. The building is proposed to be clad in architectural metal siding, identical, very similar, if not to what exists on portions of the building today, and given its function, has no windows. So it's essentially, the addition is comprised of two blank walls, and the other two sides append to existing parts of the structure. I believe I have no other testimony at this point to describe the project.
Hey, do we have any questions from board members? Okay, seeing none. Any questions from our professionals?
I can confirm that the slopes, I come up with even less than 15% on that area of disturbance, so no waiver necessary for steep slopes.
Ms. Laney?
Uh, no, no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Warner?
Just a couple. Not at all, dear. The the, was there a discrepancy with the square footage on the plans and the engineering?
The architectural plans are, it appears to be correct. The site plan drawings have a, it's like an additional 20 square feet on the first page, and then a second number on the second.
Reconciliation as we're going with the architectural plans is the accurate one for square footage, is that correct?
Yes, I will testify that the proposed addition is 1,265 square feet in size and footprint.
And the the how, what is the length of the building walls that have no windows or fenestration or articulation or anything else?
Give me a moment. I will now refer back to Sheet A1. The longest wall is 42 feet 8 inches in length, and then the short wall is 30 feet 0 inches in length.
And I guess the second of the two longest walls, if you will, would be internal to the art center itself, right?
That is correct. The other two walls connect directly to the existing structure.
Right, so there's one short wall and one long wall that's not connected, and the long wall
Well, that is exposed.
That's exposed.
That exposed, they're all connected.
And so 42 feet, okay. I just wanted to get that in front of the board. And going back to our memo from the TCC, no variance relief is necessary for parking stall size or opaque screen wall because that variance relief was already granted. Just help me out. When was that granted? When the Fine Arts Building itself got an approval? When Trinity Hall addition got an approval? I know there's a lot of Del Barton approval.
Is that a question to me? No.
If you don't know, your counsel might know.
Well, if you could repeat the question, I believe I could answer it.
Sure. The the notes on the plans indicate that it was previous, that no variance relief is necessary for parking stall sizes deficient to our ordinance, and an opaque screen wall of 15.33 feet high around the emergency generator.
It was the Trinity Hall addition.
It was the Trinity Hall addition?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Um Do we have a setback? Did you give the setback to Mendham Road? Did someone give the setback? The engineer?
Yeah, it was 800.
Okay, thank you.
Approximately 850 feet.
And will the, our fire chief has asked that the addition be internally sprinkled. Will it be?
Yes, it will.
Okay, that'll be a condition stipulated to by the applicant. The emergency, the emergency, the Environmental Commission had one recommendation about tree replacement. Are any trees being removed?
I would have to defer to Mr. Girantano.
No, okay, then I take it there won't be any tree replacements, so I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna just ask, board members, does anyone have any further questions?
I have one further question. If this application were approved, can you comment on the timing of when you would be planning to implement?
I would have to defer to Father Michael Tid on that one. On construction, anticipated
I believe within the next year, year.
Okay.
Has it gone to
It's been, it's been there for a while, so I'm just
Once we get this approval, because we get the other approval we were getting, we're looking for then we take it to the construction document levels, even if it is, we really have no idea how much it would cost, but given its size and simplicity, it probably won't cost very much. So once we can get a firm number that we can put into our capital projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Mr.
Thank you.
Would you like to conclude your application?
I think I can conclude it unless anyone has any additional questions of the witnesses or myself.
Just to make a comment again, there's no one from the public asking the architect any questions. And we'll open up, again, there are nobody from the public, so there are no comments from the public on this application. And we'll then move to the board for a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'd like to get a motion?
Yeah, I move to vote on the application.
Okay, I, quickly, Mr. Warner, I thought I heard there were no variances.
You heard right. Preliminary final site plan approval, fully conforming per the testimony and the conditions stipulated to will be assumed to be in the resolution of approval should the board grant.
Thank you.
And we get a second on this?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions, comments from board members before we vote? Seeing none, Ms. Santiago, would you call a roll?
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did we, did we get the motion seconded?
Yes, we did. We have Mr. Barrett motioned and Mr. Quinlan seconded.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Is there an order?
Yes.
Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Aliso?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Everyone enjoy their holidays.
We're gonna see you in two weeks.
I don't know. I'm gonna have to go chasing around for another case.
Okay, we're gonna move on to other matters. Legislative Committee report.
No report.
Nothing here.
No, we're now open up the floor for public comments. I see, I believe that's your assistant, Mr. Warner, your associate. Your boss, sorry. Okay, we have no need for a closed session. And then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, a voice vote?
Aye.
And we are done. Thank you all. Thank you very much.